You know, so our thinking here is to take our students and give them the opportunity. And we've got, I don't know, we've probably got about 22 international businesses right now. And I think we've got applications from eight or 10 students. Most of them are coming from the accounting area in the college. But they'll be working with the businesses and they'll actually be doing the business. They'll learn what the business does, they'll learn what the problem is, they'll come up with a way to solve that problem, and they'll come up with a resolution working with the business owner. So the whole point is to try to enable somebody to develop that, those kinds of applied skills right away so they can solve the problem for the business. And in the process of doing that, they're learning how to be entrepreneurs themselves.
Is that part of the, I guess, that's where we're headed? Is that what the-
That's one of the things where, that's one of the focus areas would be the Student Portal, the International Business Accelerator. The college has been gracious enough to help us create some space at the LAC campus. And you know, it doesn't take much, it's, we're talking about a space where students can come in. You know, it's, it's called the portal, but it's not a technological piece, it's a lab, really.
Right.
It's an environmental lab where they actually are assigned and matched with businesses. Our Entrepreneur in Residence will coach them, the students and the businesses, will mentor the students and the businesses, and there'll be networking opportunities for them. So it's really quite a different kind of program from a usual kind of internship. Plus, they'll get paid.
And that's distinct from what you were referring to as far as Business Incubator and Investment Fund, the Center for Entrepreneurship, or is that the same?
Students would be working, so that an incubator could be a bricks and mortar place where new, young businesses come and they get, they start up in those spaces and then they grow into a larger business and move out. Our International Business Accelerator businesses will have been in place, they're already established, they just need to move on to the next level. The incubator is a place that the city is looking at downtown to establish a co-working space where you allow people to come together and utilize the support services that you've got in that incubator. You can make some of those virtual technical assistance pieces. And so that's all in discussion right now, what that might look like. But the incubator is really designed to nurture and seed businesses so they get the kind of start they need to be able to make it to the next level. And funding and capital infusion becomes a huge problem for them. And that's where the Innovation Fund comes in, in trying to attract investment.
You know, I have to tell you that I attended two of your Innovation Fund SOCal events, and I was blown away. It was fantastic. I was a little bit saddened to see that we didn't have one last year, I'm hoping we're going to have one. One of the people who, it was kind of like a Shark Tank model, that the folks, the participants were pitching their business ideas, I think he was the one that was, alluded to this incubator. There was one in UCI, my alma mater, that they have an incubator. Are we looking at, looking, pretty much modeling those successful models, if there are any? Is that what the intent is, is for establishing one for ourselves in downtown Long Beach or at LAC?
Well, actually, the person you're talking about is Amir Benifatami.
Amir.
And he is our Entrepreneur in Residence now.
Okay.
And he is actually working, he's worked at UCI to put a Student Portal in place. He's worked at Chapman. We're the first community college to be able to have that kind of model and that concept. So he's going to be working with us for the next year or two to launch the Student Portal and put that in place. But we'll probably be providing services at the co-working space downtown in Long Beach. We'll be doing the same kind of wraparound services with the International Business Accelerator that we'll have here on the campus. And then ultimately, we are in talks with the Port of Long Beach as well. You're aware of the port and the technology assistance work that they're doing with new and emerging technologies for alternative fuels. And so if we launch this and get it going, then that could be a pipeline as well for them because they get a lot of people that come to the port that want them to fund their idea, but they're not really quite ready for what the port needs. And the port needs a place to be able to seed these young companies that are working on alternative fuels. So that'll end up being part of our accelerator. You can have an incubator that isn't in a building.
Mm-hmm.
You can have a virtual incubator, yeah.
And the other question I had was, how many, do we have a statistics or tracking mechanism where we're tracking how many of our businesses that we're supporting and helping are hiring our students? Is there some sort of a tracking mechanism, or can we focus on, because we certainly help a lot of businesses, and incentivizing these businesses to hire our students?
Well, we've had some of our interns have been hired, but the Student Portal is going to be all about that. You know, our hope is that these businesses, the students will do such a good job in working on a particular problem for the businesses, that they'll turn around and hire them. And so that'll be built into our tracking mechanisms for the program.
And what's the timing on that, again?
We're launching it this fall.
Okay.
We've got student applicants already, and we've got business, international business applicants.
And the one in downtown, as far as that, that one goes, what's the timing on that?
The timing for that will probably be after the first of the year.
Okay.
A lot of moving parts have to come together to make that work, and so we'll, we're encouraging that. But I think one of the messages to, for everybody to receive is that if it weren't for Long Beach City College, a lot of this stuff wouldn't be happening in Long Beach.
Yeah.
And I think the fact that we do have such a robust platform of programs and services and that we've been successful, you know, people are coming to the college now and wanting the college to be a partner in these things, and wanting the college to help to put it together. You know, that creates multiple opportunities for us in so many ways. And I just think those opportunities for students and probably in our instructional programs will grow as well.
Right. And last couple of questions. On your report, I believe it's the Overview and Vision Report, page five of seven, you're touching on generating revenue. What do you mean by that?
So-
And who is it for?
We're always looking to generate revenue, of course, but I think what you're referring to here is if we can develop the co-working space downtown Long Beach, we'll have companies and young businesses come and participate, we will be providing the wraparound services for them. So there'll be the consulting services for business advising, there'll be educational programs for them, we may be working with our students to work with them. The idea is that these things generate revenue for the college as well. The other piece that's critically important is this platform of programs, we're hoping, and we think that it will, and we've had a lot of discussion with our Entrepreneurs in Residence about this. When you have a solid platform where you've got a synergy, that there's a lot of there, there, it attracts investment. So investors are interested in looking at companies that they know are going to have a lot of support, that they know they're going to get mentoring, that they know that the college is involved with students, working for them, that the city is involved, the city's got a Bloomberg Award. So ultimately, we're working our way towards a synergy of programs that investors find to be attractive, and so they're going to come, hopefully, and be able to seed some of these startup businesses.
So when you say-
And we will be working in that, we will, we will have operational costs that we want to get funded.
Need to ask these questions. So what, when you say revenue, what is that, how does that translate to revenue for the college? Is it revenue for the college, or are you counting the grant funding as revenue? Because that's, at least, that's how I read it. It says CAED had generated approximately $45 to $50 million total prior to 2006, average of $10 million annually in local, state, federal, and private grant funds. So that's what we account for as revenues?
So revenue has a lot of buckets of funding, that kind of revenue, it's grants, federal grants, could be Chancellor's Office grants, could be contract education, it could be funding that comes to us to be able to provide a service, community education, you know, so there's a number of different ways. The Innovation Fund is new, that's new since President Oakley has been here.
And, and last question, when is, what are we doing with, in your report, it says, page six of seven, that we're revamping the Innovation Fund, Innovate SOCal Investment Fund. What does that mean? And what, what is being revamped? And when are we going to have the next one?
So the revamping is that we learned a lot going out and trying to get investors to come and seed businesses. We had us helping them to get advising and mentoring, and we were attracting dollars. We didn't really have anything else that made it attractive for them to have confidence that businesses would be able to continue and grow. What they want to do, investors want to be able to seed a business, an angel investor wants to seed it so they grow, and then venture capitalists can come in. And ultimately, they want to generate revenue from that business, either buy the business or a partnership with the business. But, you know, we did, we just didn't have enough support to be able to make that attractive. You know, we've got an Entrepreneur in Residence right now, we've got the Student Portal, we've got the International Business Accelerator, we will have a regular accelerator, we'll have a co-working space, we've got the Goldman Sachs Program, we've got the SBDC. That package under that little house of an entrepreneurship center becomes a much more attractive package because it gives confidence to investors that there's support along the pipeline, the continuum of funding for a business to be able to be successful. I don't know if that answered your question, but, you know, they, they need to know that the money that goes into that business is going to bring a return for them. And if it's just the business struggling and not much else to support it-
Right. So do we have a timeframe in mind as far as where we're going to be launching the revamped version, or?
So we do have some funding left in our Innovation Fund. We want to get the Portal going, the International Business Accelerator going, we're probably looking at the spring to do a round of funding. And we're working with our Entrepreneur in Residence to work with venture capitalists. He himself is a venture capitalist.
Okay. And then lastly, can we have a fact sheet so that we can share with our community members and advocate for your, the college advancement and economic development? I would certainly appreciate it because when I'm talking to community members, I just want to make sure I'm capturing everything that is of benefit and of use to them, our students, and our community members, because not a lot of people know about this, and I'm constantly talking to members of the community. Is it possible to have a one-pager, or perhaps like a double-sided flyer?
Actually, I thought you had it, we just produced a one-pager, and we'll make sure you get it. I thought you had it in your packet and example.
I don't have that.
That's the first crack.
I wasn't notified that we have, but that, thank you for being ahead of the manual, and thank you so much for doing a really great job. I'm very proud of you and your team and the impact you're making in our community. And I look forward to getting more updates on this front. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience, all of you.
Before I recognize trustee Otto, I want to make a comment, and that is, we represent not only the city of Long Beach, but I represent half the city of Lakewood.
Right.
And trustee Otto represents all of Signal Hill. So when you come up with these wonderful facts that I know you're going to come up with, make sure that, that those areas are included in, in that survey, because I think it, it's kind of misleading here. But I need to call on trustee Otto because he hasn't had a chance to speak.
I also represent the entire Catalina.
That's right, yeah.
Basically, job-wise means Avalon, but, but this should not be forgotten.
We actually have a lot of relationships also with businesses in Lakewood, Signal Hill, our district. Right, yeah. It's a great suggestion, thank you.
I know that historically, it's been hard for people to get their arms around the idea that community colleges do this kind of work. Our third mission is frequently misunderstood, denied, but it's there, and neither the UC system or the CSU system has any mission that they have to deal with that has to do with the economic well-being of their communities. And yet, it's oftentimes a hard pill to swallow because it doesn't feel like education unless you connect the dots like you're doing tonight. Is that fair?
Yes, actually, that's a great way to explain it. The whole point is, we want to educate our students, we want to train the workforce, we want to make sure our businesses are healthy and vibrant, and then they can get the jobs that they need, the right jobs, in our community, raise their families, educate their children, and provide the tax base for the city. It really, it translates into wealth for the community and quality of life, and it is connecting the dots exactly, that's what it is.
Now, I know that the state recently has put a lot of time, money, and energy into a career technical education study and program. You mentioned that in passing, but my question is, tell us a little bit about what that is, and what you think that means, if anything, for the future of that kind of education in California and at Long Beach City College?
Well, that's a, that's been an amazing initiative because I think from my perspective-
Tell them what it is.
It's a strong workforce initiative. Out of the Chancellor's Office originally, there was a statewide task force, our dean, Molly Smith, was on that task force. Vice President Long is very engaged in that as well. There's been $200 million from the state committed to that program. It really does look at our career technical programs and put some prescriptive things in place that will support and enable CTE programs to be able to align, to put guided pathways in place, to better connect with business and industry, and ultimately, to be able to add value to the communities of the colleges that they serve. But we'll be working on that. There was a report, I think, to the board a while back, but, you know, we have a report that's due January 30th, and my guess is, we'll be coming back to you at some point and just sharing with you what the college, Long Beach City College, plan is for that. But it engages faculty in a much more proactive, value-added way, I think, in that initiative.
In fact, I know that from Long Beach City College on that task force, our own Lynn Shaw was very involved, and in fact, is, is she still even with us, or is she temporarily with the Chancellor's Office working on these things, or?
Lynn can't get away from me, so she's not working at the Chancellor's Office.
But she's returning.
My understanding was-
I will definitely send her back eventually.
My understanding was that she went to the Chancellor's Office to get away from you, and this may be a stalking issue, I don't know. But, so because that seems to be such a strong initiative, where do you think that's going to take this issue statewide?
At statewide, ultimately, it's designed to be able to connect in a more real-life, relevant way, our career technical education programs at the colleges with the needs of the regional industry sectors. And I think it'll, it'll innovate our career technical programs. I think it's going to excite our faculty to be able to engage and connect more directly with business and industry. One of the things in it is taking a look at our curriculum process, approval process. You know, business and industry, they can't wait for two years to be able to have someone help them from a training standpoint or educational standpoint. So that clearly came out loud and clear in the task force work, that something had to be done about that whole curriculum process. So I think it's going to breathe some life into the community, this is my personal opinion, the community colleges, the career technical programs, and consequently, help us to mobilize better as colleges as well, to respond better to regional needs.
And I know through the Long Beach College Promise, we've developed great partnerships with Cal State Long Beach, Long Beach Unified, and the city of Long Beach too, now that it's a signature to that. Does, not the promise itself, but do those partnerships, which are, they're certainly not unique, but they're unique, but they're probably better developed here than in many, many other places.
Right.
Does that assist us in achieving the goals that you've been establishing for this kind of education in, at Long Beach City College?
Absolutely. I think, you know, the work that faculty are doing to be able to align curriculum, the ADTs, we have a meeting coming up next week with the College of Business at Cal State Long Beach to take a look at aligning the Not-for-Credit Logistics Program we have here with K through 12, their new logistics program. And the College of Business wants to put credit-based programs in. Well, we've got now an opportunity to put a credit-based logistics program in. We started off as a Not-for-Credit, did the work in that. So that's clearly a great example of how you get that alignment all the way from high school to postgraduate at Cal State Long Beach. And the College Promise, I think, helped push that decision at the four-year university.
So, and really, finally, at least on this subject, this area seems to be in ascendancy, this third, third mission for California community colleges in terms of the understanding that people are developing. But could you, do you have an opinion as to, compared to the other 71 community college districts in California, where we sit with regard to what it is that we do, the breadth of what we do, the quality of what we do, who else is looking at this, and are there other places for us to go? Where are we, and what else can we do?
Well, I think, and I say this, I do say this with a certain amount of humility, I think we're seen as a leader and a thought leader in this area. One of the things that it has enabled us, there's a couple of things that are really critically important. We have all of the services and programs and the capability for economic workforce development under one umbrella. It's not separated out. A lot of colleges, they'll have contract ed in one place, and they'll have workforce development in another place, and then they'll have another area looking at community ed. I think that's enabled us as a college, that happened with Jan Kio when she came on board, that enabled us to be able to build capacity to work in that area. You know, so it's that. The other thing, and, and, you know, this isn't gratuitous, it really has a lot to do with leadership. If you take a look at the CEOs at a lot of the community colleges, they don't understand the third mission at their own college, maybe they're not interested in it. We have a CEO here that, that has practiced economic workforce development with us. You as a board, I remember, what, 10 years ago, if you took a look at the goals and objectives at the college here, it was three pages of goals that the college had every year. The last few years with the tenure with President Oakley and the leadership of the Board of Trustees, you've honed that down to very specific, clear, intentional kinds of goals. And there's no confusion about what it is here at Long Beach City College, student success, completion, making sure that economic workforce development is serving our community as well as being financially sound, and creating a good collegial environment while we do all of that. Those things make a huge difference because that's what drives the agenda. So the, whether the agenda is success in, in the traditional college, or the agenda is workforce development, in my area, it's very clear what our direction is.
I remember in the statewide report, when it came out, the Strong Economy Report, that one of the big issues was, and it shows how education interacts with business and economic development, was they couldn't get the curriculum for these programs approved in time because it would go to the Chancellor's Office. Are you listening to this, Hila? And it would take so long to get the courses approved that by the time the courses were approved, opportunities were missed. I know that there's been a concerted effort in the last year to change, to help that along, and to get courses approved more quickly, but I think of that because of the difficult, that, you're trying to marry two different cultures, and, and that's not easy, but it seems that great progress is being made.
Well, I think also, Dr. Long, do you have a couple of comments you want to make about that?
Okay, now it is. I leave tomorrow morning at 7:15 to serve on the statewide committee for Strong Workforce for the curriculum. So I'll be with a group of people discussing the issue of curriculum and curriculum approval. But I also want to say that here at Long Beach City College, we are doing some really good things with respect to getting a curriculum approved in a more expedient way. We're taking things to the LAO CRC, which is the LA Orange County, I forget with all the rest of it, the Advisory Committee, Regional Advisory Committee. So we're, we're taking all of our program CTE parallel approval through LAO CRC and the Curriculum Committee, we're not waiting. So that's really going to reduce, they've made a commitment to approve things within a month. You know, once you give them the items, they're approving them within a month, so that they are committed to making this go faster. So the conversation tomorrow in Sacramento will be about how we can institutionalize or system-wide make these things move faster with respect to curriculum. So we are already doing it here, but I, I would hope that in these meetings that we're having as part of the statewide committee, that we will have some really good recommendations for that to happen.
And I remember, I think at the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, we did that with a construction management or a construction technology program, is that we, we had it, we, we decided we could build a program around it, and it went right out to that consortium or that, that group to get, to get approval to move forward.
And, and next month, you'll see a whole bunch of certificates and, and programs for digital media, which are CTE as well, that have already been approved by the LAO CRC. They'll come to the board at your next board meeting, they were just approved last week in curriculum. So we're moving as fast as we can, working very well together right now.
Okay, great, thanks. That's all for now.
I just wanted to, I was sitting here, I'm wearing a device that tells me that I've been inactive for an hour and a half, and I need to get up and go somewhere. So I'll listen to this, but at the same time, I don't want it to go, it's always good to have these type of sessions where people hear about what's going on with this. You touched on it, and there's no sense of me adding any more to what you have said, but a couple of points I do want to make is that it has been said repeatedly about, this is a mission of community colleges, and yet, many of the community college districts do not take it as aggressively or successfully as this place. I can only speculate that since we sat around the gentleman for 10 years, and he was one of the catalysts of pushing this, when he was hired as the Superintendent President for this college, I'm going to take an assumption that when he shows up at the state Chancellor's Office, that's going to become a pretty strong precedent for that new sitting chancellor. I'm just taking a wild guess here, because the point that you made in 2006, I thought it actually was a little before then, but about that time, where this college really started to aggressively go towards it, and I, and I always tell people this when they ask me, because there is that disconnect, if you will, but it's a disconnect only because of lack of information. What you don't, you don't know what you don't know. And in this case, is that we're in the business of education. That is not always a student that we think of that's going through the traditional educational path, it is someone who's coming here to improve their lives, thus the programs you have, from everything you've talked about, whether it's a truck driver or things taking place. I will tell you that the critical part of this college, when it was doing things like this, and, and the void that we filled, when I was, well, when I was on the Long Beach City Council, economic development was a very clear agenda, because we had things like those big buildings that sit next to us right now, well, the one remaining one, used to employ 30,000 to 40,000 people with good jobs, with McDonnell Douglas, Boeing, and gone. And yet, in 2000, I believe, well, I'm not going to say time certain, but the city of Long Beach sort of moved away from economic development, they even got rid of the Economic Development Division, if you will. So this college has fit a void, not just because it's a mission, but because it's got the strong leadership. And the only reason I'm saying that is because, as trustee Zia mentioned, these are those areas that really make a huge difference in your community, helping businesses expand, hire more businesses, helping individuals improve their lives through education to get a better job. So there's a lot of things that you look at that really is of value, that only happens because a board wants to do it, and the Superintendent President wants to do it. And what I want to do is a little bit of a plug, because we have this later today, as we go through a search for a new CEO, don't think that issue should not be brought up. If it's a mission, if it's something that we want to continue, then we better look at that individual and see what that individual really wants to have as far as economic development, business development, so on, so forth. It's a remarkable component for the college, I'll answer the question again, a little biased, but in my professional life, where I get to go to a lot of community colleges throughout the state of California, this college does things above and beyond which others could only hope for. And the programs that were mentioned, Goldman Sachs, Innovation Fund of America, all the different things we do, it's remarkable how seriously we take that mission and what we do. And again, it's not the tradition of what you think of our students. Well, everyone in this community may become one of our students. A business owner becomes our student because they're learning how to do a business plan. Or they're involved in some of these programs. or they're involved in some of these programs. So it's one of those really interesting that I like to do because I come from the private sector, and I really feel good about what we have accomplished, and in particular, what you've done over these, over this past decade, and how we've really answered the call in so many ways. It really is an impressive list, and I, and I really do hope we just continue to make it even better and better, because it's one of those things I'm very proud of, and also I know it really does make a difference in people's lives. And that, I think, is what we really are in the business of. We're here to educate people, and educating people means a lot of things to a lot of different people. So I'm just really pleased with everything I've heard. And actually, to have these questions here, even though I'm not supposed to be sitting for an hour and a half without movement, it's nonetheless, is so critical on what we have done. And a compliment to everyone and all the work you've done, because it really is, it's not typical of community colleges and/or even higher education. So it's something that we all take great pride in, and results of what we've done. So great job, and thank you.
Well, I, I wanted...
No, I was just, I'm going to compliment you, so you, so you got to wait. No, but I mean, I really think we should salute Vice President Bynum, who stood up here and, and had to answer questions, and never did she falter for a second about what the answer was, and that, that really, really is remarkable, and I thank you for your leadership on this. And now, trustee Malauulu, you're going to be quick, right?
Yeah. I, I understand that we have to move on the agenda. We have another presentation tonight, a couple, two, two, two or three more. But I just want to reiterate one point that I don't want to get lost, and then I have one quick question. When you mentioned that...